All right. Congratulations, President and President. I'm pleased to take you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Counsel, I need a motion for approval of the intended...
Motion for approval, intended? Seconded that.
Which has been named second by King, all in favor.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Consent agenda, please, Mr. Peady. I move that we approve the consent agenda. All things seem to be in order.
Can I second that?
Please, it's in the name, the second to approve the consent agenda. Who called, please?
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor King?
Aye.
Counselor Robinson? Aye. Amanda Barnard?
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Next, we're going to have a presentation around the back. EPA officials present a proposed cleanup plan for CPAC property. So, you know, ladies...
Glenn, can you hear me okay? Yep. Good job. All right. Susan, I'm going to try and share my screen.
Okay. I'm going to stop my share, and then you should be able to share yours.
Okay. You got it. My name is Matt Dorrington. I'm our remedial project manager with EPA. Thank you for the opportunity to present EPA's proposed plan for cleanup of the Columbia Falls aluminum site. This presentation I'm sharing with you tonight was also shared on June 28th at a public meeting. My intent here is to share that exact same presentation. At the time, my coworker, Amanda, presented it. But tonight, I'm joined by Ms. Hanyevich, who's a community involvement coordinator with EPA, and Dick Sloan, project manager with DEQ. Dick and I have worked together for a couple of years, so I look forward to working with you some more, Dick.
It's going to be a year or two, isn't it?
That's good. Okay. So, plans tonight just cover the site history. We'll talk a little bit about superfund process and where we're at. I'll go through a summary of alternatives. We'll talk about what led to the generational alternatives, how we evaluated those alternatives, and then a brief summary of what EPA's preferred alternative is. All of this is captured in the proposed plan, which is out there available for public review. We're in the middle of a comment period. That comment period ends August 31st, so we encourage you to submit your comments in writing to EPA. And once the comment period closes, we will prepare written responses to all those comments and make those publicly available. Okay. Just a quick show of hands, how many were at the June 28th meeting? I'm just curious. So, you all know about the site, assuming you do. The EPA listed this as site on the NPL list in 2016. The two potentially responsible parties are Glencore and the NPL. This is just a timeline of events. As I said, 2016 NPL site was listed. In 2020, remedial investigation was completed. 2021, a removal action was done. The time curricular removal waste near the river area was removed. Visability study was completed in '21. And then, June 1st of this year, the proposed plan was released by EPA. So, this is a summary of where we're at in the process. I colored in red or boxed in red the proposed plan. As I said, June 1st, proposed plan was released. Normally, that's a 30-day public comment period. We're opening this plan for comment for 90 days. The next step in the process, once we've evaluated the comments and made any adjustments to the preferred or selected alternative based on public comment, we will move towards a recorded decision. Our goal is to get the recorded decision done by the end of this calendar year. That's an impressive target, but we're all working really hard and diligently to try and achieve that. Once the recorded decision is done, not in here, but the consent decree negotiation process would begin as between EPA Department of Justice and the PRPs and their attorneys. I'm hoping that process takes about a year, at most. And then, at that time, we can move on to remedial design process. So, that's just basically where we're at overall. Okay. So, starting with what are we trying to do? What are the objectives of the cleanup? What are we trying to accomplish? Let's take a few notes here. The objectives, the remedial action objectives describe what the cleanup is intended to accomplish. I know this is probably hard for many of you to read, and I'm not going to read all of it. The remedial action objectives are specific to contaminants. They can be specific to the media. In this case, we're dealing with the soils and sediment media, groundwater, and surface water. The remedial action objectives are based upon human and ecological risk assessments and reasonable anticipated future use of the land. So, what you've got here is a summary of, under, human health. We're trying to prevent ingestion, direct contact with the main contaminants. Eliminate groundwater exceedances of the similar contaminants. For ecological, we're trying to eliminate aquatic life exceedances in surface water and groundwater by reducing migration of metals, cyanide, and fluoride. For, again, for groundwater, reducing cyanide and fluoride and arsenic exceedances in groundwater, preventing further groundwater degradation and further migration of that plume or plume expansion. Trying to eliminate that. Preventing ingestion or direct contact of arsenic and cyanide fluoride in the groundwater. Similar, eliminating aquatic exceedances for those contaminants. And the surface water, reducing metals, cyanide, fluoride, and the pH of polyhydrocaramic hydrocarbon concentration. Keeping those contaminants from migrating downwards to the surface water and contacting the river. So, that's the objective we're trying to do. This is just an overview of the site. The area in black is the site boundary. Given the different features of the site, it's broken up into different decision units, so there's different types of contaminants in different areas. And to address those specific contaminants in those areas, it was organized into what they call decision units. Decision units 1 through 6. Decision unit 1, the area in yellow, contains the... That's the location where the spent pot liner was carried. That's where the source of cyanide and fluoride is. There's a number of landfills around the site. Industrial landfills, sanitary landfills. Those are all categorized into one decision unit. The soil itself is the large green area. The percolation ponds in four, those are specific process features. And the river decision unit, which is down near the Flack River. That's the one I mentioned earlier where the time curricular removal was took place. And groundwater, groundwater is hatched area in blue. It's underneath the site. Groundwater generally flows north to south and a bit eastward towards the river. Okay. So, we'll talk a little bit about evaluation of alternatives. So, you're given a number of alternatives, a number of cleanup options. How do you sort them out? How do you evaluate the feasibility of doing each of those alternatives? How do you rank those against one another to determine which is the best? So, all the remedies were evaluated against seven core criteria. First two are threshold performance criteria. No alternative is even considered if it doesn't at least protect human health and the environment and is in compliance with applicable or relevant and appropriate requirements of the ERAs. So, they have to at least do that. Then, again, give a list of alternatives. How do you sort those out so we evaluate? Those are called balancing criteria. What's the long-term and short-term effectiveness of the remedy? What's its ability to reduce toxicity, reduce mobility, or reduce the volume of those contaminants? Is it implementable? In other words, can you do it? What's the cost? Cost is a factor, it's not a thing. And then, finally, modifying criteria. So, during this public comment period, we are getting input from the state on EPA's proposed cleanup alternative. We get comments from what DEQ and the community. That's the purpose of this public comment period, is to gather your feedback and consider it. And it could potentially modify the details of the selected remedy. Okay. Did you print some? Okay. Well, give me one. So, we printed some of these out, but let me just walk you through it. It's a bit of an eye chart, but essentially, in green are the decision units that I talked about. The landfill decision units, 1, 2, soils, percolation pond, river. So, that's the green. Under each of those decision units are listed the alternatives. And then, across the very top of this chart are those criteria that I just covered. The threshold criteria and then the balancing criteria. So, each of these alternatives is ranked and scored. We came up with a scoring system to help differentiate these alternatives. Against all the balancing, er, you mean all the selection criteria. So, in landfill decision unit 1, based on a scoring system, you can see to the far right, the alternative scores the highest is one of the selected. So, for landfill decision unit 1, containment via capping and a fully encompassing slurry wall. I've got a spot on what a slurry wall is. Look at that, that's helpful. Under landfill decision unit 2, containment via capping was selected. For the soils, excavation of those contaminated soils and then consolidation into one onsite repository or one engineered repository. For the non-percolation ponds, similarly, excavate those contaminated soils in those specific areas, consolidate those into one area onsite, and cap that, cover it. And then, for the river decision unit area, because of the time curricular removal that already took place, we'll continue to monitor that area and then monitor for migration of contaminants that I mentioned. Do those express at the river? Are we seeing that migration or not? Okay? Okay. So, this is where it'd be helpful if you had those handouts. You can see some of these... Well, I'll try and cover this. So, you saw the range of alternatives for landfill decision unit 1. We saw some things about capping or containment, groundwater extraction. You saw the slurry wall. That was the one we selected for landfill decision unit 1. What is a slurry wall? This video is really helpful, and I'm really hoping I work. And Dick has a lot of experience with slurry walls. So, this cartoon is helpful to see we're digging holes. It's 120 feet deep. And it's surrounding the entire area of contamination. And so, they excavate this. There's another picture coming up that helps. And then, it's essentially a cement mixture, right?
Yeah. Cement mixture, and you mix it with bent knife, and then you put it back in the ground so it continues.
Yep.
It's going to be about 3900 feet.
That's a lot. And 100 feet deep, right?
About 100, 125, maybe, in some places.
So, you see how this, you've got your contaminant in the middle. You're trying to keep it from migrating or contacting groundwater in our case. This is a pretty substantial feature. So, that's a slurry wall. And I'm a chemical engineer. I spent 20 years working for it in the oil industry. And so, moving into remediation, which I've been doing now for like three years, I've probably never seen this before. So, it's pretty fascinating.
Well, there's been a question, how long they last? Just a classic example, a lot of people don't realize. There was a slurry wall around the old drain center in New York City.
Wow.
And even though that horrible thing happened there, that slurry wall is still intact. When they rebuilt it, they did not have to do anything to the slurry wall. It was still intact.
Do they take this slurry wall down to bedrock?
I don't know how they got to the 120 feet. Do you know?
Yeah. Basically, this slurry wall, and we've done a lot of drilling, installed a lot of wells, down about 100 feet is what you'd call an aquatary. And we have wells on top of the aquatary and wells below it. And it shows the contamination has not gone through that confining layer. You color what you want. It's not bedrock. It's all above bedrock. But there is a confining layer, like I say, down about 100 feet. Part of the design will be to do detailed soil borings all the way around to determine just exactly whether you need to go 100 feet or 110 feet or two. And that may vary, you know, as you go around the...
Next, Dick.
Round the river.
Okay. Excavation, I think, is pretty straightforward, where you actually remove the contaminant, bring clean fill and hide it. Capping. In this picture here, in this image, you've got a synthetic liner that covers the contaminated material. Above that, a permeable layer, then a filter. And the native soil, the groundwater is allowed to drain through the native soil, goes through the filter fabric. And then, that synthetic liner contains it and then deters it to a treatment system. This is just a basic aeration or filtration type system here being shown. So, that's capping. Groundwater extraction. This is important because under 4A, EPA's recommended or preferred alternative modifies 4A a bit. And what we'd like to see or want to see is extraction wells installed inside the slurry wall and outside of the slurry wall. And we'll monitor the performance of that slurry wall and make sure those contaminants are staying inside the slurry wall and not affecting groundwater. The ability, though, will exist if there is migration. We can use these same wells to extract contaminated water and treat it and discharge groundwater. And I think Kaiser-Luener site is... Chris does some work on that, published some... And then, that's exactly what they're treating water. I'm not sure that of the slurry wall. So, my point there is it's proven it works. But that's our backup. So, the return is modest. I think that's a important point out, that we didn't just take the highest ranking alternative. This particular one needs to be approved of it. And that's our recommendation. Soil cover. Again, this is just an example. Here, we have contaminated soil, and you've got some type of geomembranes covering it. Vegetations allowed to grow. And you've got drainage points that are collecting any groundwater. And in this case, you're showing pictures of monitoring wells. Institution fiber remediation was evaluated. That's just letting plants do their work, try to take contaminants, modify them. That was one of the alternatives we looked at. And then, that's certainly our alternative. And our attorney reminds us of that. It's long-term monitoring use. It's not certainly our alternative, but that's what we're going to be doing with the river area. One for performance purposes. And again, that cleanup in that area is already done. Okay. So, I think I've covered much of this already, but EPA's preferred alternative includes excavation of contaminated soil and sediment, consolidating those into an engineered repository, and implementing institutional engineering controls to protect the integrity of the existing landfills, prohibit groundwater use beneath the site so that that water can't be used for dirt. The pump and treat method is what is referred to here. That's what I just described about having wells inside and outside the slurry wall and the ability to remove contaminated water if it is impacting groundwater. Treat it and then discharge clean water into the surface. Yeah. As I mentioned, I'll leave this comment out there. Again, the preferred alternative, which is fully described in the proposed plan, is subject to change based on public comments. What kind of feedback will be given? So, here's some... Project managers are always nervous about communicating timelines, but this is what we're trying to achieve. We anticipate, hopeful that the design can be done longer than a year, so within a year timeframe. Construction, we have a narrow construction season, but if we're all working hard to achieve success, we're hoping for one to two construction seasons to have it worked complete. Maintenance will be ongoing. And then, of course, the five-year review process. Every five years, we come in and monitor and assess the effectiveness of the remedy and then make changes if we need to. If we stop. Next steps. Talked about timing of the proposed plan. Comment period now runs until the end of August. Hoping for a recorded decision by the end of the calendar year. Consent decree negotiations by end of the next year. And then remedial design '25. So, you're looking at starting work hopefully in '26, '27. That's the rule. Okay. Again, I encourage you all to submit comments on the proposed plan. Look at what we put together. Encourage and we can provide constructive feedback. And we'll take those comments and provide responses in writing. But at this time, I can take just some questions about the process or anything that wasn't clear that I presented. I'm happy to do that right now.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? I have my question, please.
Yes, sir.
And that is the monitor. When you're going to come back in five years, you come back, you'll be reviewing, like, obviously, those are constantly being monitored.
Absolutely.
So, you'll come back, look, and all put all that together and then make sure that what you're doing is best.
Absolutely. And then, that data will be monitored continuously and ongoing. We won't wait the five years to see what we gathered. But that's a formal review process where we document all the data, five years of performance, and make recommendations. That's a work product and a formal part of the process.
And it'll typically be sequence, probably initially, your samples, quarterly. And if you don't see anything happening over a couple of years, you'd probably go to semi-annual. You know, and then eventually go to annual monitoring. But there would be monitoring here for a minimum of 30 years.
And that monitoring is reported to who, the ongoing monitoring? Who does the monitoring and who is it reported to?
In a case like this, it would be Glencore, right?
Yeah. The responsible party would do it. And that would be part of the consent decree that Matt mentioned. All of that is detailed in there. And that, we just finished one for the refinery in Great Falls, what's called the remedial action board plan is included as part of the consent decree. So, when they sign that, they are committed to...
Submitting reports on some frequency. Whether we get our amendment, reviewing those in general.
And the other key thing that would be part of the consent decree too is a communication, Glenn, and with the staple. Obviously, you guys are an important staple. So, that would be included in the consent decree also in terms of reporting to the stakeholders.
Okay.
I have a question. So, the monitoring, Glencore does the monitoring and then submits the reports to you guys?
Yes.
So, there's not an unbiased party in there that reviews reports alongside Glencore before it gets submitted to you guys?
We have yet to work out the details of that, but normally, Dick, they contract an independent third party to do the form. So, that's typically how those companies do it. So, yes, there is an independent party in here in the middle of all that's gathering the data, analyzing it, spending it for state review.
The independent is hired by Glencore or by DEQ?
Independence is hired by Glencore, but also the state, for example, will hire an independent contractor and the EPA hires an independent contractor. And again, going back to that consent decree, a key part of that is what's called a QAP. And I'm not really understood what a QAP is. It's a quality assurance project plan that covers guarantee in those... All data, for example, would be evaluated, you know, by an independent...
Right. So, EPA reviews that one. That describes where the samples are taken, how, what frequency, what evaluation criteria, what limits are set. So, that plan is very... It eliminates the uncertainty.
Thank you.
Remember, as far as questions, anybody in the audience have specific questions that have not been asked up to this point in past meetings? If you have a question, please keep it short and go ahead.
I just need... Could you explain how Carmen King is a part of this whole process?
Carmen King is with...
Oh, she is, Matt, yes.
Can you do that?
She's a consultant, she's a scientific expert who basically EPA did the evaluation, came up to the conclusion that this community would benefit from a technical advisor to review the plan and then provide their suggestive questions that the community might want to ask in their comments. So, they're an unbiased third party who helps provide that insight for you guys. So, they're still available, the technical advisors, even though they don't have any more meetings. They are available via email. And if you don't have their email address, just contact me and I'll send it to you. They also have created a document that has their comments on the proposed plan that they were passing out at the meetings. That, again, I have PDFs available that I can send out to.
I have to answer a question.
Any further? Go ahead.
Question just on the process. After the close of public comment on August 31st, you answered questions and provide that back to the public. If you have questions or raise that point to the need for additional study or work, is there any more public comment in that process?
I don't know the answer to that question. And I'm looking to see... Kailene Castelli is site attorney with EPA. Kailene, did you hear the question? It's a process question I'm not familiar with.
I did. I don't think that the National Contingency Plan has another formal public comment period. But I think from a practical perspective, if we received public comments that, you know, maybe we're just dramatically altering the alternatives that we selected, we might put the new proposed plan out for public comment again if it's just drastically different.
Thank you.
And it is important, the recorded decision that Matt mentioned will include a detailed responsiveness summary. In other words, it'll include all of the comments that were submitted and a response to all of those comments. And I understand in some cases, the response may be viewed as negative. In other words, if I had submitted the response to do X, Y, and Z after evaluating it, the agencies and their contractors may have determined, for whatever reason, that X, Y, and Z was not the right thing to do here. But that would be explained as part of the recorded decision.
But those responses will be, and I can assure you this, will be comprehensive. They will leverage data that's already been gathered, technical information that supports a decision, and why. And so, and the state will assist with the proposal.
Yes, Chris?
Matt, under this proposed action, how much, how many acres roughly will remain for all intent? for all intents and purposes industrial landfill or, or in perpetuity?
Good question, and I, and I don't, this is, the next step, you know, once we get the record decision, then the CD done is remedial design. And as Dick pointed out, in the remedial design phase, we're gathering data, we're going to get more data, we're going to sharpen the pencil, we'll define better those areas, the extent of certain contamination, location of repositories if those exist. So I think, Chris, it's a little premature to speculate in terms of numbers and bones, but as we get closer to remedial design, I think we can answer that question.
I think it is important too, Matt, to recognize, and you could maybe comment too, Steve, basically, within the plant site, within the definition of the super plant site, there's what, eight hundred acres, nine hundred acres somewhere in that range. Looking at the West River Slugs Pond, the West Landfield, the other thing, you know, probably of the nine hundred acres, there'd probably be five or six hundred acres available for development, redevelopment. And that's purely a guess, Matt.
Purely a guess, right?
Yeah.
But an asterisk next to your comment. But no, you're right, I mean, it's, again, and we, I think, I think it's better and safer to let's get through design first, but...
All right. Okay. Simply, thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
For coming and giving these presentations. Very well.
Thank you.
And I'll put some copies of the fact sheets that I left in my car, back around the table around noon.
All right. If you guys want to stick around, get rest of the meeting, we'd certainly welcome. If not, if you'd like to add something in the underway, we can simply hold the meeting and let you do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Looking forward to working with this.
Thanks, everybody. Yeah. No, you go ahead. All right, moving on.
Now, visitors' public comments, for any item that is not on this evening's agenda.
Good evening. Shirley for point 285, should we start or I? I just, I have kind of some procedural questions about tonight, and one is, just for clarification, is the budget part of the meeting, is it a public hearing?
Yes.
So that the audience...
We're doing it, yes, it's, we're continuing the public hearing until adoption of the final budget.
Okay, so we'll have a chance to ask questions and comments and...
Susan?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. And then the latter part of the agenda, talking about housing, is, will the public be able to participate on a conversation about that too, or is that just the council?
Is that just something you're going to present to us?
Uh, no, Mayor, the, in your packet is a memo from Counselor Fisher, and it's a continuation of your housing discussion.
So is that something that would have, have a discussion amongst the council and the public?
Um, you can take comment on your agenda items.
I guess burying that agenda, I don't know. Yep.
Okay. And finally, at the urban development workshop, Counselor Fisher had asked Mr. Mulkey if he would create a summary of Senate Bill 382, just, you know, to make it a little easier to understand, and, and in public comments, I had asked that that be made public, and I was just curious about the progress on that document.
I can address that, Mayor and Council. The League of Cities and Towns and the Montana Department of Commerce are working with city officials, including administrators, planners, and attorneys on creating the 382 roadmap, and they've had one or two meetings.
They had one meeting and then one, eight conference calls, I don't know how many people does that.
So they're working on that roadmap, and then that, that summary, like everyone knows, like I said, it's Department of Commerce, the league, and city folks putting, impacted city folks putting together the roadmap for that, and then that will, that will come forward. Each city is a little bit different, depending on some, some timing. Our growth policy was adopted within the last five years, so our economy is a little bit differently than others', but, so that will come forward to council.
And public?
Yes. Yep, it'll...
That's a public, because that means it's public.
Yeah, it'll, it'll come forward in your pocket.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Mary Flowers, Citizens for a Better Planet, 135, make sure you can spell, or Citizens for a Better Planet. Just a couple of encouragements. I understand that you as a council have submitted some prior letters on the EPA proposal. I would hope that you would take additional time to look at Carmen King's report and make additional comments, and think it's, and to publish those, so that the community sees them and has, you sit through way more meetings than a lot of folks do, and your expertise, I think, is valuable to the community, so I would encourage you to weigh in again on this cleanup proposal. And secondly, on your discussion on housing, I understand that that is being prompted by a letter or a comment from Darren, and I appreciate that. I hope that the previous discussions that you have had, that there will be a more public opportunity to continue that discussion and notice as a opportunity for public discussion other than just what you may be able to cover at the end of your meeting today. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we have a public hearing, continuing the public hearing. And who are our clients? Person?
Okay.
Matt, please.
So tonight, because we're, we don't have a whole lot of council members, the discussion tonight is going to talk about mill levies, about the mill levy. Department of Revenue met their statutory duty and certified our value to EPI.
Yeah, there you go.
So although I did ask them if there were any changes to this, like when, they're not anticipating substantial changes, I have, I do have some extra copies in my hand out, because similar to those slides, when it's too small and you can't see them, you guys know that my pet peeve is that, if you can't see it, then you can't read it, and it's not very useful. So our market value increased, our certified market value increased forty-nine percent from six hundred and fifty-five million to nine hundred and seventy-eight million. With that, our taxable value changed forty-seven percent from ten point one million to fourteen point nine. Then our newly taxable, and we, when we were projecting some mill levy information, I thought that our newly taxable had hit about a hundred thousand, but it only hit eighty-one thousand four ninety-four. So, so you know where that newly taxable comes from though, is the completed buildings in, in January. That eighty-one million translates to about six million in this market value. And so that does track, in twenty-two, twenty-three, we issued a total of forty-two building permits. Thirty-one of those were, thirty-one of those were remodels, like the deck, garage, maybe a remodel of a commercial. It includes seven single-family residences for two point nine five seven, new commercial, four new commercial for just under five million dollars. So we have to look at that January number, right, because it has to be occupied and finished. So that's six, six million equivalent makes a little bit of sense, although last year it was a hundred and forty-two thousand newly taxable. But we, we go back, so last, the prior year, July twenty-one to twenty-two, we also had forty-two building permits. Our report shows forty-three, one was a dimma, a demolition without any value, but that, during that time period, we had eleven single-family homes for four point three million, two commercial for three point nine, and one multi-family for seven hundred and twenty-five million. So, so it all tracks, right, as to when they were finished. And right now, we have four active building permits, some of which were issued in June, including a single-family residence that we count. So the number, the number makes sense, right? It falls in line with what we're seeing in our building permits. So eighty-one thousand four ninety-four, which gives us the ability, well, newly taxable before resort tax would give us, that eighty-one thousand would give us the authority to raise ten thousand five hundred and twenty to develop. But then, but then we reduce it by the resort tax, and then we only have five thousand ninety-two dollars. But, so our tax value, less incremental value becomes twelve million twenty-nine three seventy-seven. Our tax increment districts rose from one point nine million to two point five, a hundred and forty-two percent increase. That means that they finally got that equipment on there.
Yeah, yeah.
Finally got the equipment on there. But with, with the numbers, so we talked about this before, so the city's authority, and I have two, the before and after the resort tax, because we, we already looked at the resort tax, and we were going to rebate a whole chunk, right? We're rebating from our previous meeting, we are rebating, all right, so you can find your number, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-five twenty-nine. The equivalent with the current mill value, twelve thousand twenty-nine, seventy point four nine mills. So we would have, with, with the forty-nine percent increase in market value, forty-seven percent in tax value, the city would have already reduced mills by thirty-five, right? And I, your last page, and I note that permission medical levy isn't final, but your last page, with that thirty-four percent increase in taxable valuation, it automatically floats the mills down twenty, but we're already reducing, reducing mills. We are, we are giving back, or another, we're looking at carryover, seventy point four nine mills that we won't levy because of the original cost. And then our other levy, that one point five, we have proposed, including an emergency OES, for our Rivers Edge park, proportionate, not funded by the federal government, and the state won't give us any money until we spend at least two mills. But one point five mills covers the cost, or should cover the cost of the federal government debt. So we can, we'll talk about that at our next meeting, we can get more, you're going to get more pregraphs and so on, but...
And that's a voted levy?
No, it's a permissive, the OES is a permissive levy. I, I put it in other and voted, because we no longer, Counsel, you have paid off all your voted levy, so, which included the general off the patient's review law, but you paid it off. So now we don't have any voted levy, and last year, we used just the carryover catch, because remember, state law requires us to carry one and a half years of payment, so you had slowly been reducing that from eleven point two mills to eight point five to zero. So you paid it off, you paid off that debt as of June of twenty-three. So the OES, you know, do we, or do we just take it out of the general funds? But that'll be, as we are completing resources and, you know, what does that big picture look like? You're going to see that come, come forward. But on, you know, last time, I used my tax statement as an example, so I was plugging, plugged that in, and said, okay, what does it look like with my increased tax value? What does it look like? So if the city, so adjusted mills, potentially, although permissive medical isn't final, but the, the tax relief based on my, and my value went up forty-three percent, but I would receive four hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-three cents in tax relief from the original tax, and that is eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, because it's seventy point four nine mills. So when we apply that to properties, it's very, it's very significant, so...
So how much money had to do with that change your, your taxes with previous year?
It changes if I turn your fifty-five thirty-one.
So you're paying less...
Yes.
Than last year?
Yes.
By two hundred and fifty-five dollars?
Three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Eighteen hundred.
Yes. And that's for the resort tax, another two hundred and thirty-six dollars because we dropped our mills. So city taxes are almost half because of the resort tax and the number, right? Value goes up, mills go down. So, and I do think, again, Department of Revenue has done a really good job of sending that message out, right? I participated in one webinar, I didn't drive down to the meeting in Calispa, but they did a really good job of saying, we're required by law to put this number on your assessment, but we already know that cities, counties, and schools are tied to dollars. And you can see that on that last page, right, is value, the reappraisal process every two years. In twenty-one, when it went up fifteen percent, we dropped mills sixteen, it goes up thirty-four percent, we drop mills. But, and that twenty is actually a little deceiving, because we didn't levy, we left fifteen mills on the table last year, so it's really thirty-five, it's thirty-five point five two mills that you're dropping because of the value. So every year, when you guys rebate money back, it's, it's good, it's working. But you would have reduced mills by thirty-five mills even without the resort tax. So you would have gone from a hundred and eighty-one mills minus thirty-four. So, so that's what I wanted to cover tonight. I was somewhat in shock that they gave us our assessed value on the deadline, and I asked what the process would be, because the law requires them, if this value changes by five percent or more after it's certified, they have to certify again. But their response, Department of Revenue said they're not anticipating a significant change in this value. City Clerk Stalin just received today the file for the assessments, which usually we get in June, so she can make all of the changes. So at your next council meeting, we'll have the resolution for the lighting district and the street maintenance district, because you can actually modify it now. So they were not, because of the change, the county went to a different tax software, and they can't give us that breakdown that we use to say, this is where our tax base comes from, and they, they couldn't give it today, and they're not sure they can give it to us at all, which is really sad, because it's good to know, like, in your budget book, we know that eighty-five percent of our tax base comes from the classroom property, and we know the portion that's residential and commercial. So it would be excellent to have that breakdown to say, all right, what does our tax base look like? Where did it come from? Because we know where the growth was, like I said, from our building permit, right? We can look and say, hey, we had just under three million in single-family homes and five million in commercial. Is that reflected in this? Also, it would be good to know... we know that 85% of our tax base comes from the class four property. And then we know that portion that's residential and commercial. So it would be excellent to have that breakdown to say, alright, what does our tax base look like? Where did it come from? Because we know where the growth was, like I said, from our billing permit, right? We can look and say, hey, we had just under 3 million in single-family homes and 5 million in commercial. Is that reflected in this? Also, it would be good to know, like, the, the valuation of residential went up pretty, well, right, averaged 49%. So it would be good to know what that breakdown was for commercial and residential. I think, just from the tax notices that I looked at, I think that the bulk of it came from residential.
And what?
Because we didn't see that same jump in commercial. So I'm still hoping that they can give that to us, because it's part of you guys including in your budget book, and we always look at, where's our tax base? So, so we will present, like a preliminary you'll have at your next hearing on August 21st. You'll have your first look at the whole.
How are you gonna make that presentation? Susan, are you gonna go through each category, or how are you planning?
Well, Councilwoman Harper isn't here, but you'll have your pie charts. You'll have, you'll have, and as you know, I have put lots of notes. So we are still waiting on some information and including some quotes on required items that we need to do. But you'll have it by category. We'll go through the general fund in more detail. Council, you've already reviewed your debt, and you've reviewed some of your other taxes. Obviously, we reviewed the resort tax, and you know, where that money is going and how it's, how it's getting there. So I, I would say unless you want something different, it'll be a, a normal presentation.
At this time, can you, you're like me about what your figure of resort tax is going to generate this year? No, I shouldn't say that. How much we are gonna put in our budget, the use of resort?
Based on collections and the historical information, about 1.5 million.
That's the number that you passed that before.
Yes, yes. So it's all, you know, we get all these little pieces. There's still some information coming out on that, how they're bundling that gas tax together, and whether or not we can use it now for capital improvement, since we could be forward a special gas tax, but now they're putting it all together. We're gonna get this check at this time, and this check at this time, and what does that look like? And I still don't have an answer, actually, from a lot of our legal, but escapes legal. Evidently, they hadn't considered that when they did the bill to bundle them all together.
I guess I have a general question.
Yes.
With the reduction that we're showing to those of us living in the city on our taxes, are our taxes going to be lower than a similar property in the county?
It would depend on the county levy for planning and road, San Jose. Well, no, health is county levy. It would depend on the county levy for road and...
For rolling money?
Planning, because they levy those outside of the cities. So typically, our taxes are, I think that they're higher than if you're not in the city, but the resort tax makes a difference. I know when Whitefish, as their resort tax became larger, they had folks just on the edge of the city asking to be in it because their taxes would be less than if they were in the county.
I think Susan, we're heading in that direction.
I don't, I don't think we're, yes, but you're heading there.
You just wonder what the, what the county is, is, is doing with all their work.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Part of the resort tax, because I've been hearing different rumors flying around, because I understand resort tax, it's every homeowner, it is like the flat same amount. Doesn't matter if my home is worth more or less than mine's. It's, it's not based on our value of our house, right? It's just based on...
No, it is based on your value.
Oh, it is based on...
Because it's based on mills. So when we calculate our mills, and then we say, less these mills, oh, my tax statement's on my desk. So it's based on mills, so it's based on your value.
Okay, I'm sorry, I gotta turn around and finish the question.
You're welcome.
Do you think this is... Okay, so we'll open your...
Your hearing's open, like, it's not closed.
We will continue this hearing? Until final?
Until it's final.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Did, just go find that question about that. Oh, oh, sure, you didn't say you had a question.
I did, I said times.
Yeah, I, this whole budgeting process with the city is totally new to me, so my question has nothing to do with mills, let me tell you. But as you might guess, it does have to do with the housing assessment. My understanding from Senate Bill 382 is that our city will now be required to do a housing assessment. So my question is, is the, how the cost of a housing assessment included in the budget for the coming year?
It is not included in the 24 fiscal year budget, because it would not be completed in the 24 fiscal year. The Department of Commerce will have some grant funds available as well. So the, the timing, our housing assessment does not have to be immediate. And that's part of the, of the timelines.
I'm sorry, it does not need to be what?
It completed in the next year.
Right.
We have three to five years. And there's some question on, is it three years or five years? But it is not, the housing study is not in the current 24 fiscal year budget, because we're waiting for the timeline from the Department of Commerce. And they are, they are adding staff and gearing up, and they have a technical team specifically to help with their gathering information. So it would be early to do a assessment in the 24 fiscal year.
Okay. And then, in all of my experiences with other organizations, a proposed budget, it's created, and then it's made available to people. And is that not part of the way this process works?
We look at, so they open their preliminary budget, and we look at different aspects. We get impact, you know, input from council, what are their, what are their priorities? What do they wanna see? And then at the August 21st meeting, because there's a lot of moving parts and a lot of information that has to be pulled together. So at that next meeting would be a full budget, August 21st.
A full preliminary budget.
Full preliminary budget, and then that's it. That's, like I said, the whole, here's the package. And then they continue the hearing, the budget's officially adopted in September.
And that is available for public?
Uh huh. So for that, for that next meeting, will, will the proposed budget be available for us to look at? Or not until we vote on it in September?
Um, no, the preliminary budget will be part of the packet.
So it will be available?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. By the way, I didn't put a dent on myself.
Okay, now, I'll continue. New business. We're a chip sealed bid.
Okay, so in your packet, you have, so when Pavement Maintenance Solutions submitted their bid, they submitted it on the old bid form and not the new bid form. But their bid is for $4.09 a square yard, which gave us hard expectations, because it's up considerably. But evidently, the raw material cost was increased. So we had amended the, we had amended the square yard to be completed to 52,022. And we had split out the chip sealed folks called for a new award. As you said, they, they submitted a, we submitted it on the old bid form. As of today, it's not in your packet that they signed a new form. So the 52,022 square yards at their $4.09 bid price would come in at 212,770. That's 12,770 more than we wanted it to be, but we've...
12,000?
Yeah.
Aren't we carrying, aren't we carrying over money from last year?
Yeah, which is, yes, we are. So the 212,770 is, is the best price. And then we're, Friday is the deadline to get quotes from the frac fillers. So you can see that Pavement Maintenance Solutions had also put in a 433 layout foot bid, which is about $3 more than we usually pay. We do not award, we're not recommending that we award that, because they sell it. So we have, Friday is the deadline to get quotes, because it was gonna be in that 40 to 50,000 mark. It was below the 80,000 bid. So tonight, we're asking you to award the bid for Chip Seal only to Pavement Maintenance Solutions at $4.09 a square yard for 52,022 square yards for a total bid of 212,770.
So moved. Any questions? So we were able to just trim what we thought we, what we wanted to do, took some non-priorities off, correct?
So, and the work won't be done until next spring?
Oh. So they're giving money, carrying it over. We'll call, please.
Councilor King?
Aye.
Councilor Robinson?
Aye.
Councilor Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Barnard?
Aye. The motion is approved. Ex-approval of the Montana DOC Home Investments Partnership Contract.
So mayor and council, as you know, the city has had to recapture some of our housing money to $90,000 on the Habitat project. And then with the Key Kettle project, we get $7,627 annually, if, if their, their costs match, but for the last few years, we've collected the 7627. When we recaptured that money, which we did want to do, but we didn't, had to, we, we now have this little bundle of money sitting about $148,000. We might have gotten another 7627. So way back, like pre-COVID, we changed our management agreement with Habitat, Department of Commerce, and the city to allow us to partner with the Kim Morisaki's group, Northwest Community Land Trust. Not to be confused with Mr. Rogel's group that was here last time, that also has parts of that in their name. So this agreement is currently being vetted in DOC's legal. And this agreement, I'm bringing it forward to you, what, what the land trust is asking us to do is to reimburse them for the only lot they could find in Colonia Falls, over by Columbus Park, at Standard Lot. They tore down the garage so that it didn't encroach there on Third.
Yeah, it's Third Avenue East.
So I think their, the asking price was 150,000. So this, this agreement would allow us to partner with them so they can buy that lot with the money that we've recaptured, and that we have fulfilled the, the federal duties that we said we would fulfill when we got the housing money, the home grant for affordable housing. So approval of this agreement, once DOC signs off, allows us to partner with the land trust to buy that lot.
And that would be the situation where the city or the land, the land trust would be the owner of the lot in perpetuity, and the, the house that is built on it, would that be built to any certain standard? Or with any assistance in that building of that home?
Yes, the land trust provides assistance in...
Ah, monetary assistance?
They provide some kind of assistance, it must be monetary.
And how do they, how do they decide who gets that? Do they actually have people put in applications, and they judge them?
They use the HUD housing guidelines, just like Habitat for Humanity does, and this would require that same, right? So families put in housing applications, and they have to meet that criteria.
So at this point, we partner with them, we blow all of our money. It's all gone to purchase this one lot, correct? Essentially?
Essentially.
Okay. I just wanna make sure you have fully understood what was going on.
Well, as you know, you know, two years ago, we could have bought two or three lots with that money, but now we can't. So this, and we only have a certain timeline in order to meet our requirements that we've put, we've put money into, we've put the grant money into affordable housing. So, and then this, so we're required, when we, when we get a home grant, we have to always spend the money that we have on hand taken with. So this would allow us to, if we partner, to, to apply for a new home grant unencumbered with the old home, if that makes sense.
So will, will the people that we're partnering with digger on the price on this? Will they make an offer, or they're gonna pay the full asking price? It's 150,000, sir?
Yeah, roughly.
For how big of a lot?
6,250 square feet, 50 by 125.
And the asking price is 150?
Yeah. I mean, actually, they'll, they'll follow the protocols and these protocols.
Then, you know, off the record, that's crazy!
That would be on the record.
I could retire that, be on my school money loss. Okay, so we, we want you to vote to allow that to happen.
To allow this, to allow this agreement that would allow asking forward with the land trust.
With the partnership.
So getting this money back through the Habitat deal, that money was a grant that we got, you get it today, and we got it back because of the, whatever was going on there. And so we have to use that money within a certain timeframe, and use it, use it or lose it?
We have to use it for affordable housing.
Okay.
And when I say that Department of Commerce does not want to have to recapture funds from us and send it back to the federal government, I can't stress enough how they're like, no, you, you need to put that back into affordable housing.
So then, once, let's just say, out with the old, in with the new, would we be able to apply for a new grant?
Yes, we can.
So we can...
Yes.
Just wanna make sure of that.
Any further questions before we move forward? Okay, the last motion.
What's it called? It's a Montana Department of Commerce Home Investments Partnership Program Contract.
I make motion that we approve the Montana Department of Commerce Home Investments Partnership Program Contract, MT Home, HPA 2301.
Standing.
Second to authorize the managers to sign said document. Any further questions? May I have a rule?
Councilor Robinson?
Aye.
Councilor Fisher?
Aye.
Councilor King?
Aye.
Mayor Barnard?
Aye.
Motion is approved?
Aye, of all. Pute approval of mutual release of all claims and settlement agreement, civil cause number DB15-2022-9390, and authorize the city manager to execute.
City Attorney Brett will, will address this.
So this is the mutual release and settlement agreement that came of the settlement conference done in this case. Counsel retained by NMIA was Marcel Quinn, Tom Hammer, you know, Dave Eadie, or was Dean Chisholm. The terms of settlement were set forth in Dean's email, and that took this mutual release and settlement agreement to flex. The settlement agreement as written is recommended for approval by the... uh, the retained counsel Todd Hammer and Marcel Quinn. In addition, Stephanie reviewed it and she also recommends that the council approve of the settlement agreement as, as soon. So the settlement agreement and its enforceability is, uh, conditioned upon its approval by the city council, of course. And so what we need is a vote from you to approve the agreement as well.
So mayor and council, I would just add under the term additional terms of settlement in four A, we had gotten a fencing boat from Buffon Fence to put in a six-foot spider-type fence, um, metal, deep black, two foot. I, I did bring that photo at our cost for fourteen thousand dollars. And then we agreed to provide a sign that matches our current signage on the north side and the south side that denotes that there's private property on the other sides and that, um, and our park hours. So in that four A and four B, that, that we're going to do that. And then at first, the city will enforce current and future trespass and impowers abuse laws and ordinances very much like we, like we do now. Um, and I would just say that this then concludes that lawsuit that was originally scheduled to go to trial in January, but then got locked to August of twenty twenty-four. And we held the court mandated settlement conference.
I do have a question. Why did we have a claim for twelve hundred and something dollars for that case? And I thought NMIA was paying?
Well, we have a counter suit. So NMIA pays, you know, in share, and then we have our counter suit. And this, this releases it all. And, and mayor, I think this comes back, you would, you would ask, and council had talked about it before, when will this be done? Um, this settlement would be far less than what it would cost us to put it through.
That's always the case.
Hi, Josh, that's a funny.
Sure.
Um, the money for the fence and the signs, will that come out of the parks section?
Comes out of the parks, I did.
And why the fence?
It's what we negotiated for settlement. And I have to tell you that our attorneys that were hired by NMIA were extremely persistent and stern in keeping with what the city would, would do and what it wouldn't do. There were a lot of things that were demanded that were unrealistic. And we did not give an inch or we didn't have to. So in my mind, this is really cheap.
Oh, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's, that's what, you know, that's what we offered them. And ultimately, that's what they accepted, the fence and the signs.
And this fence on that southern boundary will be on the property line. Our current little decorated wooden fence that we had extended was up on the bench. You know, we just extended it, but this fence will be installed on our property boundary. And you can read in here, it says extending to the top of bluff as structurally feasible. There were, yeah, it was an interesting negotiation. But, um, but we do have, we do have photos of what they were proposing. So it's, it's an attractive fence and I did very suitable for that area.
Justin, what, what was the original complaint in essence from, from the bill?
I'm glad you could ask that because I'm embarrassed to say that I don't even remember. Stephanie is the one that worked on it with Hammer and Quinn. And so if you want me to give you an answer on the complaint, I have a relative in the area that would have all my minutes.
Thank you. Then the other, the other question is, how far does the fence extend? Does it extend to the high water mark?
No, no, just to the, the way it's ordered, just to the top of the bluff as structurally feasible. I, I will say in negotiations, they wanted us to go out into the water.
Into the high water mark.
Like they would be hanging out over the bench, but that's not structurally feasible. And, and nor could, you could prevent to do that.
So at this point, where is all this going?
Yes.
The flat mark?
Uh huh. Yeah. Um, they wanted us to fence the east side to the river, which we did not. That's not why we have a plan to leave it there, so.
And it's just that, just, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm Mark A. L. S. Attorney. And just, just to preserve confidentiality, I'd like to keep the remaining and lingering arguments about what was passed to and fro. It sounded confidential because the purpose of that conference was to be confidential.
Um, did you recognize him to speak? I didn't recognize him.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
No, the mayor, yeah, I'm, yeah, this is Justin. I'm sorry, Lauren. I, just for process purposes, the mayor was wondering if he had recognized you to speak. So if you had introduced yourself.
Yeah, okay, so I, mine is Lauren DePatrick. I was co-council on this matter with another attorney pro postman. Um, the, the purpose of me making my objection is just to make sure that the confines of this document are what this, what are discussed and not, um, and not, and not confidential offers which were passed back and forth at the mediation, which are confidential in nature.
Understood.
Thank you.
Yep.
And our attorney will see that that will take place.
Thank you.
All right. Can you put your question before we move to the motion?
I move that we approve the mutual release of all claims and settlement agreement in civil cause number DB fifteen two zero two two dash nine three nine D and authorize the city manager to execute.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. To approve said motion, uh, will call please.
Councilor Fisher?
Aye.
Councilor King?
Aye.
Councilor Robinson?
Aye.
Mayor Barnhart?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Um, next, reports business mayor and council. Um, and we are to discuss what you put forward that we read, that was given to us?
Yeah. And that was just? So I can, I can give a synopsis of why, why I did this because I don't want to waste anyone's time. But I had been approached, um, from some members of the public, um, both pro-development and anti-development, who had been wanting to talk to me about issues. And after thinking about it a little bit and consulting with Attorney Brett, while there's no development on the table premise, and it would be, it's technically illegal for me to talk about housing to people, um, compared to the public. It could come across as a perception that I was being unduly influenced. So what I wanted to do, since people were asking or interested in my thoughts, is that's why I just went back and I had this, um, memo that, um, in February, Flat Beacon had asked me some comments about housing developments on the east side. So I thought rather than have individual conversations with people, which could be interpreted as ex parte communication, I just wanted to share what I shared with the Deacon then. And these were my thoughts on this, this specific house development to go on then, but it also just applies to my feelings about what we need to do about affordable housing, attainable housing, and developing housing, um, on both sides and everywhere. So I just wanted to share this so that any conversation I might have with either developer or with Ms. Oakley or anywhere else, rather than have a private conversation, I think the right thing to do was just put it out in the public, these are my thoughts. And I wanted to get, um, input from the council on what I was saying. And of course, we're short a couple people. That happens. That's not my ideal term. And if, if everyone disagrees with my thoughts, that's great. You know, it's, but I think it's important to continue these conversations while we don't have an application in front of us. Um, rather than just every time the application comes up. And certainly, um, this references a specific development that was only a federal, but that, it had already been withdrawn. And so I was using it as a talking point of some of the issues that I had with the way the city was approaching, with the city council and city planning board and just members of the community were approaching some of the housing developments we have on here. So I put this out there so that I could just state my piece publicly so everyone could see it. And then I wanted to engage with the council and/or the public about it. But I certainly wanted to get input from the council. Um, and once again, to the other three members from here, um, so I could just, just get a vibe and feel, feel what you all thought. Because I just tried to lay it all out there because we had not, we're not done with how we know this. I'm sure we're going to be coming for us in many different shapes and iterations. And so I just wanted to lay out where I was. And I haven't answered questions or described more, but that was the gist of it mostly. I just want to continue the conversation. Maybe it doesn't happen tonight. But I wanted to lay out there where my thought process was as we look at the inevitable growth of our entire valley.
I have a question. I'm wondering if we're setting ours, if that, if we should undo that. I mean, if each one of us puts up and says, this is what I think, then you put those all together. If I put a letter similar to what you put. And then that's for public approval, but should we be doing that? I just don't know, Justin?
You're not looking for any approval for one. You're just, because in a, in a council discussion about housing, right? In an open council meeting, you're going to be conveying your thoughts on housing anyway. Those are all public meetings. There's a record tape in the meetings. But if you put together a statement, you, you choose to do so like Darren has, you're just putting it down in writing and, and that's what your, those are your thoughts. It's more, it's coherent, it's, you know, cogent, it's all articulated. But it's something that Darren will probably say again in future meetings regarding housing and development. I don't know that each of you has to do that. You're certainly free to as council members. You're not having, as Darren said, ex parte communications, telling your individual developers what you think. You're making it available. You're free to comment to the press if you want to about what you think about housing. So I don't know that I really, you know, it's not like you're held to it. It's not like you're saying, you know, at some point in the future, well, you said this time, this will.
That's exactly what I'm going. I mean, they use it as a, as something they're going to say, well, because I did this. Because in this game, you said, this is how you thought so. I'm following what you, your thoughts. And I'm, I'm bringing forward something, using that as a, as partial criteria.
Sure. And, and circumstances of every development are different.
Exactly.
They're unique. And so what you think with regard to a general overall concept does not have to apply, you know, square to an individual application. And on top of that, the, the developer isn't really entitled to rely on what one council member happens to think on a particular day. What they're entitled to rely on is a decision by the council to hold. Because that represents the city, not a municipal council person.
I know one of the things in yours, Darren, is because you used the example of what we, like you said, well, we go to Roscoe.
Yeah.
And then, oh, that seems pretty specific, you know, to me, the way that's put out. So I guess if a person did it more of a generality.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, the way I feel about growth in the future of our community would be in this direction because.
Yeah.
Uh, that would be a different thing than what you were when you did this. I guess that, that, I can understand doing that. I, I don't know whether, I don't feel it's necessary. I feel a good commi, a good discussion at a public meeting by the council, um, with, knowing beforehand that we're going to have this discussion and come prepared to sit and listen, but to act, to contribute to that with, with what you think. That, to me, would make a lot of sense. I can understand that. And like you said, this is a woven development right now. So, uh, it's something we're, we certainly, we are going to see again. And, uh, how do you guys feel about that?
How do I feel about that? I'm, I'm, I'm probably more guarded, uh, about my opinions. I mean, if you have a specific question that you're going to ask, I'm more comfortable with having an outline. These, these are the questions and how are we going to answer them? Then to just randomly throw my thoughts out there. Uh, because, I mean, everything is subject to change. And so I'm more of a, uh, precise, you know, what is the situation kind of.
So in your case, Paula, you're saying, well, I want to wait till a particular backpack is presented.
Exactly.
And I want to tell you what I think about that.
Right.
And that's fine too. But like I said, you know, expressing your thoughts about housing and development in general, you're entitled to do that as a, as a council member, especially in the context of discussion about that very thing. And it's, it's useful because there's no other opportunity afforded to you as a council, as a group, to do that. You've got to do it in a public setting.
We can't in the midst of public hearings with these individuals that are trying.
No, certainly not in that. You can't get together privately and do it.
And if I may interject here, and that's where I brought this up in a mall because I had been approached, and once again, it's not necessarily about, this is a trend to focus on the River Highlands development. That was just, I had written this six months ago. It encapsulated my view, so I just, and I had already submitted this to Flat Beacon so they were ready to print it anytime. They, they pulled a couple quotes out here when they were doing some articles. Um, so I didn't want to make it about River Highlands. Like this was a quote in time that philosophically aligns with, with what I'm getting. And so I think that these are also, because Paula, you're absolutely right. Every development comes up and it's different and we have different facts, um, to think about. But sometimes our conversations get so truncated when we have a six-hour public meeting and listening to all the comments. And it boils down to a quick one or two sentences, yes or no, and we're out. And I, so I don't think a lot of us articulate what, what we want to see and why we want to get there. And so once again, I'm not, if you all don't want to take any samples, I'm not mad at you. I've just had enough people ask me that. I'm just going to lay this out there. And I want to be able to have the conversation publicly. So anyway, I'm rambling, but go ahead.
I have a question for you. In what context was, was the Deacon interviewing you?
Um, so they.
As a city council concerning growth?
Yes, exactly. And that, they actually, I believe Susan had spoken to them and recommended that they contact some of the city councillors.
I think they actually called you, but I didn't know a lot, so.
I, probably so. Um, I think I'm my shelf and probably my shepherd, you're only dumb enough to talk too much.
Yeah, I.
All respect to them.
It's probably all my ears in, you know, as an elected official. I mean, if the media got ahold of me, it was like, give me the questions and I'll answer them. But I would not answer anything off the cuff. I've been caught in that. And so that's probably why I'm hesitant to, you know, to put anything in, right? Unless I have, you know, the specific question or fact.
And that was also why I, I had a conversation with the Deacon. I said, this is my statement that you can quote the Deacon here. I'm comfortable with that. We can have an off-the-record conversation of, for background. But please don't quote me just running my mouth because I'll get myself in trouble. But this, like, there are things people agree with, things people disagree with, but this is how, this is where I stand.
And I appreciate, I appreciate you and how you do, uh, express yourself. And you're very forthright.
And that's what I like to hear. It goes into, you specifically say, basically what I read in this is you're saying, everybody needs to understand the process. You know, the city's not doing this, this developer's doing this. And, and I think that so many people get that convoluted thing, like we're going out there and pushing developers to do this stuff or something. And I liked how you went into that at the end. You said, you know, there's a process. These people bring this to us, you know, unbiased wise, they bring it to us and that's how it goes. And I just like how you put that in there. It's like, I, I don't want to say blame, but if you want to put the blame on somebody, make sure you're pointing the finger in the right direction. You know, we're not going to push this, we're not going to push this. We are the mediation in there.
Yeah.
And I, I like telling you that, because to me, that's really important that the people do understand there is a process.
Yeah.
It's not just willy-nilly when we come in here and do this stuff. It's not first time, you know? So I like that part.
I appreciate saying so, and I may respond a little bit. But yeah, that's something that a lot of people, um, the public don't understand because especially when they get to, um, growth plan and policies that we're enacting, especially the growth plan is approved by the planning board, then approved by us, and then dating. Especially the growth plan is approved by the planning board, then approved by us, and then date management. And so when people get mad at our city manager and our city planner for letting developers do this, like, they came to us and said, like, it says here you can do this. Can we do this? And they say, as far as we can tell, yes you can, the planning board and the council has to vote for it. But they just got to do the process of what the planning board and the city council has put together. So, now's the part two. So, sorry to keep chiming in, but I...
No, I appreciate that part.
I think that the best thing we did in the midst of that was when we had that workshop for the community on growth policy. And that was, it was growth policy. There were so many people that came to that. And I appreciate just what you, just what you were talking about. They didn't know how this, how this built their process. And I think that the next public hearing, I think you could really tell them that. We had a lot more people that were aware, that wanted to be part of that public hearing, who were more aware of what we were trying to do and how we do it, how we process this stuff. So, I think, I think that giving that information out to people so they can understand it, I think that's just crucial. And as far as the members of this council, I have so much confidence. When anything is brought to us, that even twenty of you guys are going to make a good decision according to how you feel about it. There's not groupthink here at all. I think we're all individuals and we all come forth with our mission. And often times, we come to the same conclusion. But I have so much confidence, members of this council, to make a good, balanced decision. That's how I feel about it. Thanks for bringing that forward. And then in the future, we'll have more conversations. So...
May it be more hard?
Yes.
May I say something? May I speak up?
Well, I don't know. Go ahead.
Okay.
It's nice to keep it fairly short. I'm camping up on that. You just keep it short, huh?
I'll try. Actually, well, okay. So, I'm representing the Upper Flat Neighborhood Association at this point. So, I really appreciate Councilor Fisher continuing to bring this topic to the forefront. Because I totally agree that we need to continue this conversation. And absolutely, that was a good time to do it when we're not faced with, with any kind of a proposal. Because that's when things start to get contentious. Just as a suggestion, that if, that when housing is on the council agenda or when you have another workshop, then it's really, really helpful if you'll publicize that and let people know that that's coming up. Because I think with that last urban development workshop, we didn't know it was happening until the very last minute. So, anyway, whether that was or not, I just recommend that you do that. I suggest that, that with continuing conversations, that you consider the possibility of even having an outside facilitator to engage us in conversation. Because I, I think that that takes away some of the, some of the tensions, some of the whoever's in control of this meeting has the last word sort of thing. But a facilitator could be helpful with conversations. But what I really want to clarify is the Upper Flat Neighborhood Association perspective on all of this. And I know that there's been, I personally refuse to go on to the Thumby Falls Facebook page. I've been told that there are some not-nice things that happen on that. And I regret that. But I want to say that Oofna works really hard to try and be respectful of the council, to be respectful of each other. We try to be open-minded. Our mission statement says that we support sensible growth and we really like to engage in conversation about what sensible growth might mean. We might disagree on that. But I, again, think that we need the opportunity to really, to really dig down deep and talk about that and look at a really broad, big picture of growth in and around Thumby Falls. We really try and emphasize factual information and not the hearsay that goes around and the blaming and all of that sort of thing. Every time I read the word "nibbey", the hair on the back of my neck stands up. I do not like being called a nibbey. I think that that polarizes people when we start doing that. And then, I don't know if you all saw our Upper Flat Neighborhood Association newsletter that we put out, Susan, what's it, in March?
February or March?
The March, our March newsletter had an extensive article that Susan and I collaborated on. I'm attempting to educate the public about the process. I'll get copies of that to you if you haven't seen it. In fact, maybe I can email it to you and then you can...
The council saw our article with communications.
And is it okay if I send, I'll send you a copy of our newsletter? We put out three newsletters a year and we try to focus on educational sorts of things other than fighting over development. So, well, I'll send those to Susan and she can decide whether to email them to you or not. But, anyway, that's one of the parts of our mission statement, is education. And I can't tell you how many conversations I've had in meetings and I've had with neighbors where I have attempted to educate them on the process. Not that I'm a total expert on it, but I've learned quite a bit in the last year or so. So, anyway, I just wanted to clarify that. And, again, I think that a really important part of the whole conversation is to get factual information. And by doing that, by, and I think that a way to help with that is to do a housing assessment. I hear you saying that we don't really need to have one for the next three or five years and we're waiting to get the outline from Department of Commerce. But I just really, really emphasize the importance of doing that so we really know what we're doing. So, so it's not us against you, but it's okay. This is what the situation is, now that's trying to figure out. So, really appreciate you including those of us who live outside of the city in this conversation. We're the ones that are being the most affected by the development proposed on the inside of the river. So, I appreciate being part of that. Thank you. Was that short enough? I know, I saw you kind of getting a little...
All right, reports. I'm comfortable. Who do you have to tell us next?
I am, I'm sorry, and it's not that we don't need a housing assessment. I think that was, saying correctly that...
I brought it up that we should have. And then state that we have a...
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, it's, it's like a timeline. And I understand that things turn slowly and stuff like that. But this is happening day to day in our community. And if there's anything we can do, just do that housing assessment. Because that's the start of so much, you know, if that's where we, if that's where we need to start. You know, getting, and seeing this roadmap of that, no, I think that, the bill is fascinating. I think it's very interesting. Yeah, I know, but getting through that. And I would hate to wait three or five years to get this done. To me, I actually like that things move slowly. I understand that because there's so much to it. But I would like to see that frontline.
Just to clarify, Councilor, it's not three to five years for the housing assessment. I do put it in your twenty-fourth this one year, that you need to do it. But to be very clear, we get updated housing from the Census Bureau and the Headwaters Economics and whatever that other acronym is. So we get constantly updated housing data that is independently verified and approved. You know, it's not, it's not me walking the neighborhoods. But, so we get updated housing information all the time. Census updates theirs each year. And we get the income and the socioeconomic and the how many renters, how many owners. And we cross-check that to our records as well. But we get updated housing information. We know that we're updating our map. This one doesn't have the little dots to say how many empty lots we have. One of the other things we look at is, you know, in our utility billing. So, for example, every July, we have to certify our active water connections to Department of Environmental Quality. And this year, it's, actually, it's on my report. Last year, we reported 2,197 active water. This year, it's 2,212. That's, so we're doing that fifteen. We added fifteen water accounts. So, part of that, you know, unprecedented growth, that's not, we're not seeing that. We're not seeing that in our building permits and we're not seeing that in our water. So of those fifteen new water connections from this July to last July, eight, single-family, one, multifamily, and six, commercial. But we, but we do get updated housing information. And Department of Commerce kicks out information as well. It's just a matter of, you know, it's, when Commerce says housing assessment, they set certain parameters, just like with the preliminary engineering reports. Your housing assessment will include A, B, C, D, E, right? That, so it's not just, we just say, hey, we're going to do a housing assessment. There's a requirement and it's... And so as they're looking at what that looks like, and I am hoping that we can get some rent funds to offset that, as well as Department of Commerce is sending up their own technical team to help us. Because they get that same housing data that we get and they can drill down and massage it as well. But it's, so it's, so I'm not saying that we're not doing anything without, like, we're looking at this data. But to do a housing assessment, when we put out an RFQ and say, hey, we need this done, that we are waiting on that roadmap. Because Department of Commerce, well, the legislature committed resources to Department of Commerce to do parts of this or to help with parts of this. So that's that whole roadmap, right? They get the housing data. We get housing data. So what does that, what does that look like? And it is, you know, it's not just that we, we just whip out a housing assessment and say, well, this is what we think. There are, there aren't, whether it comes from the federal government or it's just the state requirements, that I'm not exactly sure, but I can tell you most things do filter down. But, so that, so when I say I didn't include a housing assessment in this budget, I didn't include a housing assessment that we do the old RFQ and move it forward. But we are constantly looking at updating housing information.
The housing assessment, the one we're talking about, the unique this, this, and this, the plona.
Right.
That's the one that's required in order to do a lot of things to try to get the feds to come in and assist. You're building, correct?
Right, and that 382 compliance. So that's, I mean, that's not, like, you know, in our growth policy, we always look at housing information. And, so this is bigger. But that's why I said I didn't include a housing assessment. We, we have already partnered with Community Land Trust and they've drilled down on housing information as well. Because, and Mr. O'Neill, that was serious at the last meeting. They have some unhoused information, right? So, we take all of that information. But that's the part that, that formal, you know, just like when we get our transportation plan. That's why I haven't included with this budget. Because of the technical resources and the roadmap that they're putting together at the same level.
Gotcha. Good to know. And real quick, I hear it says our next meeting is July twenty-first.
Oh. Well, that wasn't ten.
Let's just say.
Or I needed another month. We're going to turn back the clock. Yeah, I was going to say August, August twenty-first.
I have nothing further, thank you.
I'll throw out that there are a bunch of great stop signs around Clovis Park now. Four-way stops, two-way stops, they're wonderful. Especially with all the increased traffic of people playing pickleball, sand volleyball, and basketball. It's just wonderful to have those traffic control places there. So I certainly knew it's been past a couple of years, just when you come to that open area, people just fly because they can see her along the way. So it's really nice to have some traffic control there. And if public works and police are taking it in. That's all I have.
All right. I'll just, I just want to continue with that, on that one. Basketball court fencing over there, is that something that is in the works?
Yes, and it's in your park's budget.
Okay. So is it in the works?
Yes.
In other words, have we talked to somebody about building it?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yes, and we have quotes and we're going to fence before we resurface.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was your...
Yes.
Also, questions were asked of me and the pickleball court dedication about additional parking. And we had discussed putting parking on the west side, green that and asphalting that.
It's all about money.
Okay.
So it would be on the wish list. We have to, there are things that we have to fund, you know, looking at the quotes to pay. So we'll get, it's on, it's on the future list. We're not funding it this year.
You're not funding it this year?
No, because we have twelve thousand for the guts of the park, the boiler roof for the bath house. We have some maintenance items to take care of in addition to fencing.
But I mentioned this to you before, but we do have additional money in that for our reserve gas, correct?
We do. If that's where you dedicate your funds. You guys have a pretty long list of things and here's some money. But that, we get to talk about.
I haven't been on the parks. Parks can be, they may be in mine. Unfortunately for you, good.
August twenty-first, you can talk about, like, okay, what funds haven't been dedicated? What are your priorities?
Okay.
We didn't get to do our tour, which I think is, I mean, may or may not be helpful, but...
Okay. And just one thought on that parking license, is it turning up? That could be stripped, it could be used, recycled asphalt, it could be watered and rolled. And that would be non-gas parking, meaning it would cost probably a quarter or maybe, just a thought. Yes, our crossing sign, our electronic crossing sign over at Fifth, what in the world happened to that?
I don't know.
We don't know?
That's his.
I didn't know, did they have a Fifth in...
Yeah, right in front of the Sonic Temple?
Oh, didn't they move that a block south? Because now there's one on the south side in front of the...
Oh.
Yeah, in front of the Coyote.
But the other one is still on the north side of the intersection.
Yeah, so it looked to me like they just moved one, so one's on the north side, one's on the south side.
Well, that isn't right.
So that's what I saw there.
I don't know.
Oh, please look at it.
I will.
I seen that, I saw the city crew over there and they, they were looking at the hole in the pavement. And they put a cone over it. Oh, well, I couldn't care less.
Well, because for a while, I walked there a lot and there was, the stub was up about three inches above where you bolt the sign on. And after they put the cone over that, and then they finally sawed that off. So, I think you bring that up. So I assumed that they had moved that light signal to the south side of the intersection. So they weren't facing each other, but there's one on the south intersection, one on the north intersection to give it a little bit more visibility, I suppose, there. But it looked like someone had actively cut off the stub there. So, because I was...
I assumed somebody just had it back over it. So, costs thousands of dollars to rebuild it.
They might have originally backed over it, but we did. EOT wanted it on the south side, because that's where the painted crosswalk is now, right, with both walls. But they should have both been moved to the...
Well, then we have to move the other one too.
Right, that's what I'm saying, yes.
Look into it, please.
I will.
I know. Well, you have four corners would be great. That's a very good question.
But, budget. I wish everybody pushed out on those. I wish everybody who pushes out on the bus is busy up there. People are coming up the hill, you know, up the line. They're coming up there and there's people trying to cross there, and that's the... They're, they're just, yeah. People, I think it's locals that aren't used to having all these people crossing the street.
I hear you saying the local store shop. Is there stops? You see those seven plates, they're still coming at you.
Yeah. The other thing has to do with park reservations.
Yes.
Are reservations available in all our city parks?
Well, we don't take reservations in every park. The parks, because you can go, you can go picnic it at...
What if I want to have a family picnic like people do down at America?
We look, so if it's a park, you want to have that, we will take them. The primary reservations are for River's Edge and Marantet because of the facilities. Sometimes like they'll do, if they're doing a big private swim, they'll also reserve Pinewood Park. We've had, we had a class reunion where there were a lot of guys that, and women from that class that played basketball, so they reserved Lumbas Park, because they did their little basketball, they play basketball. So we, primarily it is River's Edge and Marantet.
So when you do reserve a park, can you ask for additional hours staying in Golden later? Because you have to, they keep parks at 10 o'clock.
At 10? If they need additional time, it comes to Council for approval.
Council won't approve it?
Yeah, I can't override it. So, so if somebody wants to stay passed, but it's, the thing is that the parks are pretty dark, right? So even on movie night with, with the chamber, it's pitch black in that park. Like when they turn the movie off, when people are going, they have to, and you use a flashlight or your flashlight from your phone to see your way. So, and then if it were a situation like with the courts, we would not, we would not entertain that because they're all in residential neighborhoods. So it kind of depends on your event. Movie night was just, like, they have to wait till it's dark. And, but we, you know, we vet that using the rules and then like with the chambers, like, that's reasonable and they can help people get out of there. But if you're in, I don't know, Fennel Park, I mean, it's pretty dark. The park is dark. So I guess we would look at, why do you want to be there after dark? And River's Edge, you know, come out of the, come out of the meadow and...
I'm also, I'm just thinking of an event. You had an event, you would, you would either supply lighting or you would, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, just like...
So they decided that and then they would have to come to the council. Now, I had one other question I had having to do with, remember that I brought this to the police chief last time about the complaints about music from the coop? Why can't they play music till 2:00 AM and affect local residents like that, like they have?
Well, like indoor, so your, your noise ordinance applies to outdoor events. And so if they get a permit to be noisy outside of the confines, but, as I, I have not gone to a concert inside the coop, but I understand that it is pretty quiet outside. But they are in a CD2, they're in a commercial zone neighborhood. So then we, the code refers to like, is it reasonable? But even if they pull a permit through the police department that asks for an outdoor to be noisier after that time, the chief sets those parameters, like, similar to what you've done before. Like the market used to, like, when they first started, they put the speakers up on top of the, the buildings so that no matter where you were, you could hear the music. But then at 8:00, they pull those speakers back in, inside. So there, there's some reasonable enough. So they were not with their indoor event, they were not out, out of...
I think the chief said that the large doors were open and whoever was responded after receiving a complaint told them just to close the doors. That took care of the issue.
It did.
Then, so let's compare that over here. I guess, I just want to have a session like this about over at Gunside. They're having their outside music and they can have that till 2:00, is that correct?
No. Outside event, not past 10 without a special use permit.
So at 10:00, those guys have to shut off?
Yes.
And then before 10, can they have the music as loud as they want?
It's, it is to be...
Still within reason?
Within reason. I mean, if you're shaking...
But it has to be a complaint, someone has to, registered complaint saying that it's too loud and then it has to be investigated.
Where the, where the cops are driving by and their windows are shaking, you know, they're probably, they're going to pull in.
Okay. I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that was clarified.
They're going to say take...
It really bothered me when we, we saw those reports of someone said that 12:00, they couldn't, couldn't sleep because of the huge amount of music coming out there.
Our police department responds rapidly to those, plus they can hear it, like, from here. So they jump right on it.
Yep, okay, that's all I have. City Andrew, or you have anything else for us?
Just real quick, Rebecca Powell with the skate park group that came is asking for the city to let them use land water conservation funds grant application to match the funds that they've raised. Now, it was my plan to use land water conservation to ask for funding for the bathroom at Pinewood, because that's next on the list. We use that grant funds. They want to ask for 300,000. They, they've raised, I think they said 400,000, they're estimating the project to be 700,000. I guess my, so pre-app is due September 1st, so the city has to give its blessing. She emailed me Friday afternoon, that's why we're talking about it tonight. But I, so my, my thought is though, that we had asked about a bathroom and there is no doubt that Fennel Park will need a bathroom sooner with an amenity like a skate park, when the parks get busier, right? The water body's not going to make it for that use. So I know that they're estimating the cost of building a skate park at 700,000. My recommendation, Council, is if the city says, yes, we'll apply for this for the skate park, that I want the bathroom included. And our last bathroom was, I think, 30, something about 38,000 installed. That seems practical, because we would have applied for our, for a different land water conservation, like I said, for, for bathrooms.
Can you put that caveat on it?
Yes. So that would, so if there's kind of concurrence amongst parks and Council, that's what I'll tell them. And I, I still have on my to-do list to do the letter for the, given what they can serve for grants, outside of this grant, if you decide, it's still on my to-do list, but when the park puts the stuff out for you to sign this week, I'll, I'll put that letter out. We have gotten two comments from neighbors. One neighbor wanted to know, can we sign a petition to say no, we don't want a skate park in our neighborhood? And, you know, the other neighbor was a little bit more vigorous. I did, that first neighbor that called, I sent her to Matt Holloway. I said, talk to Matt, because she was concerned about traffic. But Mayor and Council, as you know, when we look at traffic patterns, like we're in the stages now to install stop signs over by the high school on 10th, is it 10th and 11th? So we, you know, we, we do the, with the police department, we do the warrant study. We look at traffic patterns and traffic counts, but again, you know, their comment was that, hey, the park is busier and you have high school kids flying through here and maybe we need to control that. And I know that Public Works and Police approved, there's going to be some more south sides, you know, by a, by a city park in that area. So in terms of concern about additional traffic in the, in that area, we look at traffic, although you already stopped at the bottom of 7, it's kind of hard to speed up. It's, it's a speed bump. But we would look at, we would look at traffic, but if there's concerns, you know, obviously they have to come back with their site plan. Council, you've tentatively said, yeah, hey, this is a, this would be an appropriate location for this skate park and we support that.
Concerning that, you had, you said you had a more vigorous letter?
Yeah.
I wonder whether, did you let the city attorney look at that?
The more vigorous letter?
Yeah.
I didn't know.
I'm just curious, because they, they talked a lot about, you know, you reduced my property value because you're, you're putting this, this in my neighborhood. Is that considered a case in any case? Can that be?
That'd be a real stretch. I mean...
I, I just, no, I just didn't really see more of their action, take, take, and concerning calling it a case.
Right. Okay, no, I don't, I don't see that. That's not a guarantee, by the way.
You can say if they, if they like to hire attorneys and gain the money, I guess.
So I'll, I'll discuss that with Rebecca, that, hey, the city is in general agreement, but if we add a bathroom, because we would have added a bathroom in water conservation. And then, we had an interesting question for the resort tax that we had not, had not yet occurred, and it was on, but they're not the golf simulator. If the fees from the golf simulator, that's part of the resort tax. And I said that was a really good question and sent it to the, for the finance director because they usually get their head... I guess I, I considered that, you know, all that public work that the resort tax committee did, and it's similar, in my humble opinion, having never used a golf simulator to like bowling league, where we said, hey, that's kind of a locals thing, right? So the bowling only pays the resort tax on beer and food as required by...
And not bowling.
And not on bowling. So that was my question back to, back to staff, was, was this similar to the bowling? You have a simulator, is that primarily local? I mean, visitors may bowl, but that's not the main, right? Because, because they're paying on the, on the sports park, they're paying on the food and beverages. So I got, well, I'll just pass that same question out. Do you guys think that's similar to bowling?
I do. Because if they're doing that, they're probably drinking and they're working on resort tax from the bar.
I agree, though, when you brought that up, even before you said bowling, it seems similar to bowling.
Well, that was my thought. I don't know what, I don't know what the finance director or board decided yet, but, but that was what I had said, like, hey, for my two cents, I think this is very similar to that conversation that the resort tax committee had about locals. And then Wednesday, my last thing, Mayor, because I know you're, I'm out of here to go back to your, on Wednesday, we meet with the Department of Transportation urban folks and they sent out the Wonkias map, how they changed our urban boundary to include up in the heights and not to 240 that matches our planning area. Like, I was really grateful that Mr. Streeter sent out a map ahead of time, because he said we'll be talking about this. But obviously, I guess our goal would be to pull it back into our planning area and not include in our urban area. He, he denotes that that's part of the 2020 census urban area, which we have two census tracts that our city controls with them, with the census bureau. And I was really kind of shocked to see that this was our census area. I get that there's some 5991s out there, but just so you know, we'll push back, like, no, we're, we're this way, not that way. So I'll let you know when that is, but that's it.
Okay. Well, then we have, did I say to the attorney earlier? Do you have anything else for us?
No.
I don't know if they're best use patrolman Rice or have you received the, are you going to be changed? Can I use his new name?
New name?
Sergeant Rice?
Yes, sir.
May I have anything from you?
No, I don't have any.
I was unsure about that. Thank you for coming. Hey, see you know for the business?
I'm looking through there.
Slashing.
You made second of all...
I'm a neat journey friend.
Aye.